Good evening. I am Lisa Lamar, the acting city clerk tonight. In the absence of the mayor and vice mayor, I'd like to call this meeting to order. And at this time, if you would all rise for the invocation and the flag salute. Councilmember Goodwin, would you please lead us in our prayer? And Ms. Sandoval, will you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Thank you for this night. It was a time to come together for important issues for our city, for its people. And we pray for wisdom, and guidance, and prudence. In your name, amen.
Give me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one on the agenda is the election of a temporary chairperson per section 30.18 of the Bethany Code of Ordinances.
I'd like to make a motion for Councilman Todd to be the temporary chairperson tonight.
I'd like to second that motion.
At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Todd.
We'll call this meeting to order this evening. And for those of you that don't know, our mayor and the vice mayor are currently on vacation for spring break with their families. And we are very encouraged that they spend time with their families. A good, strong family structure is the backbone of America, so thus, we encourage that. So with no further to do, we'll go to item number one, no, item number two, Consent Docket A through H. Do I have any questions? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Cash your votes, please. Number three on the agenda tonight is the public hearing item, consideration of possible resolution on item number 1537. So do we have a staff report on this one?
Okay.
Small table. Good evening. My name's Hank Moore, and I serve as the City of Bethany's Economic Development Director. And I'm here to speak on the resolution 1537 that's before the council. The language of the resolution was drafted with consultation between dual counsel of former city attorney David Davis and our acting city attorney, Bethany.
Excuse me, Hank. Will you pull the mic closer to your mouth, please? Thank you.
This document is based upon the comments in the decision of the latest planning and zoning meeting that Mr. Davis participated with. Acting city attorney Bethany Childs has been in direct consultation with Mr. Davis regarding this resolution. The proposed resolution addresses a couple items that need to be legally addressed as part of the project's progress and recommended as a requirement prior to the completion and final inspection of this project for a certificate of occupancy. The background: The property involves the northeast corner of Council and 23rd Street. It's an out parcel of the DeVille Shopping Center. The parcel is being developed by the property owner for the purposes of construction a new generation of a 7-Eleven store. Total commercial investment for this store will exceed $3 million. The project will generate new Bethany jobs, improve the appearance of a major corridor intersection within the city of Bethany, and bring new commercial activity to that corner, all of which are important aspects for the Bethany community. The store in a full annual operation is anticipated to generate approximately $60,000 to $70,000 dollars a year in municipal taxes. Property will also generate approximately $30,000 dollars a year in ad valorem taxes. These property taxes generate will critically benefit the Putnam School System, the Oklahoma County Health Department, Oklahoma County Government, Francis Tuttle, and also to support revenues for the new Bethany Municipal Library. This is a substantial economic development investment in a cornerstone for revitalization of both 23rd Street and Council Road. It's the first major commercial-type investment within the city of Bethany in a number of years. I wish to thank Mr. Brown and his team for reconsidering Bethany for a new store location and for working with us as we address these project issues. Some of the historical perspectives of this sizable commercial investment include that the in-ground fuel tanks of this location had not been used since 1998, and that the prior owners had paid into the fund of $5,000 deductible to have the tanks removed. Property was also known as the DeVille Car Center and has the address of 2400 North Council Road, Bethany. Property was sold in November of 2002, and the tanks were requested through the Oklahoma Corporation Commission to be removed in 2005. Property owners received approval from the Oklahoma Corporation Commission with a remedial action plan, case number 0642399, and has the facility number of 5505127. Eventually, the tanks were properly removed, and the soil replacement for backfilling was to the satisfaction of the Oklahoma Corporation Commission. Another parcel on this property was known as for the Surinamese Stockade and housed the daycare for a short period of time. According to the files, beginning in 2012, the City of Bethany, through the city manager John Schugert, had made contact with Mr. Brown, president of 7-Eleven, to offer a sales tax rebate of up to five years. Nothing was accomplished at that point. 2013, there was a draft agreement, and again, neither side took action. Property was officially purchased by 7-Eleven, Inc. in September of 2014. Initially proposed in July of 16 of 2014, there was a proposal for a 50-50 sales tax rebate for a period of seven years. But again, nothing had been done. Subsequent agreement was approved by the city, terms being that 60% of the first two years of sales taxes and 50% of the remaining five years would be rebated and was approved. But again, it had not been accepted and signed by 7-Eleven. Further subsequent agreement to be signed in August of 2014 was that the structured sales tax rebate would be 80% for the first three years and 60% for year four and five. This July 22, 2014, was a special meeting of the Bethany City Council for the approval of this grant agreement between the City of Bethany and 7-Eleven. Both current councilors Kathy Larson and Jeff Knapp voted yes on this agreement. John Schugert was the city manager. February 20 of last year, another attempt was made for an agreement by Mr. Gilbert Carlson on behalf of the city's Bethany Economic Development Authority. Again, resulted in no formal agreement. Last fall, we began efforts to re-energize this project in September, and I began by contacting Mr. Brown, and we began a dialogue exchanging revised points of consideration for the economic development incentive grant. We began to finalize the details in November and presented draft points to both BDA, the Bethany Development Authority, which the council members are trustees of, in the city council in late November, early December. The entire process was transparent, inclusive of BDA, inclusive of the trustees of BDA, and the city council, and had been open to the public for comment. While we are convened tonight to address the resolution only, I'm happy to answer anything related to the grant agreement.
The resulting draft was a new grant granted with modified terms of several prior provisions.
Hank, we can't hear you. Can you?
Okay. The terms that were agreed upon were 62% sales tax rebate for two years, 52% of the sales tax rebate for five years, for a total of seven years.
There is a specific provision for a construction deadline of 2/29/2020 that was agreed upon. That's given a 14-month window for the time the grant was signed for the construction to be completed.
Can you speak into your microphone? It's going in and out.
You need some water?
Better? Sorry about that. Again, the BDA and city council were presented draft points prior to me formally presenting and getting approved from both sides of the agreement for the signature of Mr. Brown with 7-Eleven. Resolution 1529 and 1530 were formally adopted by the city council on December 18, 2018, and on Friday, December 20, at 4:30, the agreement was executed and formally accepted and signed by Mr. Brown. This project has been a collective effort, all the way from the acting city manager, both city attorneys, the recent past city council, the current BDA board, Mr. Carlson, City of Bethany Planning and Zoning, the city engineer, and the Community Development Department. Everyone has been dedicated and focused on assisting this commercial project towards a completion. And everyone supports that this commercial development be accomplished without circumventing the intent of any legal requirement. This is being done by requiring two specific items be addressed by the district court level, and that the city will simultaneously work to get approval of a drainage plan. It is not my belief that Mr. Brown is attempting to avoid any specific requirements, but rather be allowed to address them simultaneously as the construction project moves forward. It is Mr. Brown who runs the risk of not having the final inspection conducted and the certificate of occupancy issued regardless of his completion date if the district courts have failed to act upon and file the record addressing the issues of the utility easement and the request of combining the three lots into one and the drainage study being completed and approved by city council. Mr. Carlson was going to be here tonight, so I was going to invite him to speak because he was on the planning and zoning, and he was also on BDA. I will conclude my remarks with some of the positive factors to be considered relevant. This project has been in the works for over five years. Time to turn the vacant lot into some sales-generating operations. This is an important commercial property for the vital intersection of 23rd and Council. It adds ready-made food for customers, and it has a wider beverage and food selection than we currently have. It also begins to build value stability within the corridor. It prepares to capitalize on the substantial increase in traffic resulting in Putnam West High Schools, athletic facilities that are just beginning to be completed. It also is a step towards preparing for the anticipated increased traffic along the north-south corridor of Council Road based upon ODOT's projections. This is generating sales tax revenues that currently does not exist. For the past five years, for four years, Mr. Brown has owned the lots and has chosen not to do this project. He's not in any need to do the project, but we incentivized it enough for him to do the project. It also boosts property taxes for the schools, the county, and the Bethany Library. It lays the foundation for revitalization on 23rd Street and to the east and more development to follow, such as the Western Oaks Tower building, AT&amp;T building, and some other projects. It replaces a smaller store across the street that is in Oklahoma City, and that brings no sales tax revenues to the city of Bethany. Brings a few jobs. It also adds retail possibilities for three or four smaller retail spaces within the same building. That's a win-win. It also anchors the intersection into both east-west corridor and the north-south corridor. It adds significant exterior lighting to the intersection in the immediate area to help offset crime. Lastly, it boosts the morale of residents and business community that the city is being proactive with revitalization effort that will aid in the financial stability of Bethany for years to come. Finally, this resolution, in my opinion, moves to resolve a couple of important issues that have been identified by staff, and the subsequent adoption by this Bethany City Council allows the provisions to be acted upon, places all our parties on equitable ground, and protects the public standing. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Does the council have questions for Mr. Moore?
I do. Mr. Moore, when you said simultaneously, can you explain that to the extent that by passing this resolution, we are allowing the process to begin to take care of those three issues, and ultimately, it'll lead to some resolution before a certificate of occupancy is provided? Is that right?
It does. It gives legal protection to staff who have certain ordinances that they have to follow in sequential order, and this allows for them to issue a building permit which is outside the norm, and it'll be simultaneously the issues that are going to take some time, a couple months, with the district court to be resolved so that they can move in parallel.
And that would be the responsibility of the city council to ensure that those provisions are taken care of before the certificate of occupancy is provided? Is that true?
I would do it before, I would state it that it'd be before the final inspection, even before the certificate of occupancy, because there'll be a checkoff of the final inspection.
So the issue related to the easements and the combination of the lots and the drainage, that'll all be taken care of in the process of construction and approved through staff by way of the city council? Is that right?
That's correct. And also, the drainage study, which has not been formally approved, would have to be approved by city council at some date in between.
And the contract has already been approved, is that right?
The incentive contract has been approved as of last December.
Okay, so this was just an issue that came up and now is at the city council to determine the process to get to that point. Is that fair?
That's fair, and I think that the part that really does is it protects the staff from making these decisions arbitrarily and without supervision and oversight, and the council is the ultimate oversight.
And that's the function that we're going to do if we pass this resolution, is that right?
That's correct.
Anybody else from the council care to address Mr. Moore?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm assuming that staff and city engineer have no objections to anything within this proposal?
I met with the city engineer this morning, and he didn't raise anything. We did, on the drainage study, the comment made at planning and zoning was that the numbers were not substantially materially a problem, but there was some differences he wanted to explore with the engineering firm, but there wasn't anything that he thought was going to contribute to any sizable issues with flooding.
Now, I think just for clarification's sake, that property in a commercial area, it's all concrete now. When they get done, it will all be concrete, so we're really not losing any of our natural stormwater.
To be fair, most of the land is equal paving and hard pack.
Right.
Which acts the same as concrete.
Right.
But yes, it'll also take into account the water collection from the canopy and from the roof of the building.
Yes. Do we know when the start date is on this, assuming everything is approved?
I'm sorry?
Start date for construction? Do we have any idea?
No, because the building permit can't be issued without this type of resolution in place.
They haven't given you any kind of indication when they would like to start construction?
Probably tomorrow morning.
Sounds good to me.
The original timeframe was they wanted to get done by fall to take advantage of the new traffic at the high school.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
I just want to touch on the drainage study again. I take it we're approving this as an alternative form so they can get moving, but our city engineer will still ultimately approve the drainage study?
Well, it's required that eventually drainage studies will come to the council for approval as well. So he will do the first part, and then we'll put it on as an agenda by and move forward.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
I have one. Normal process in a site plan approval lies within community development or the council.
Yes, I understand. Yes, the site plan was submitted to community.
And is that going to hold true?
It already has been. That's how they found the deficiencies.
Going on. It's going to happen when we get the additional site plan details. Will they do that approval as well?
I'm not sure what you're, the drainage study will be the site plan.
The drainage?
Yeah, that will be submitted as a complete parcel.
Okay.
Ms. Larson, can you speak into your microphone?
We will go ahead. Tonight, we will be allowing the removal of the easement.
It's a requirement that the easement be vacated.
Okay. And that's being addressed. We're also approving and stating that the three lots have to be joined together.
That's correct.
And I'm assuming that will happen prior to the removal or capping of that land line?
Yes. I believe that's a major driver for that because three lots are served by that line, so if those are all one parcel, it'll be connected directly.
One, not three. And then, the rear setback was the fourth option, the fourth task before us, and the location and the use of that, I can understand that.
And I had spoken to the owner of the DeVille Shopping Center, and he didn't have any problem with that setback being half the distance.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution.
Well, it's a public hearing. We haven't heard from the public yet, so if you could hold that for motion for just a moment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is a public hearing item. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to address this issue?
It's nice to be the invisible man at my weight. Thank you. Amanda, Matt, it's our welcome to the circus. The opportunity that I've had to be involved in this includes my service on the Bethany Economic Development Authority and my role as vice chair of PNC. Of course, I'm involved in the 23rd Street vision thing. This came to our attention when we were doing the comprehensive plan back in 2015. And in fact, Mr. Herron and Mrs. Larson were at one of the steering committee meetings at the children's center when Mark Long brought up the importance that the City of Oklahoma City puts on Council Road as a future economic driver. That makes it very important to us because that's one of the areas that we happen to be right smack dab in the middle of. And 23rd Street, of course, as we know, generates roughly 45% of our total sales tax. So this corner has long been a corner that has been an eyesore, frankly, and this is the opportunity to move this into something that's productive and will bring a lot of positive traffic into the area. Serving on BEDA last February, I did some research on 7-Eleven, found out that this local area is the only section in the country where the business is owned by an individual or a family rather than being corporately owned. And doing further research, digging for any opportunity to reach out to Mr. Brown, I found that I had an acquaintance 40 years ago who, along with Mr. Brown's late-deceased father, had been the founding officers of a national corporation, a organization for the promotion of convenience stores in the United States. I had also had the opportunity to have worked in the estate sale of his folks' home. So I thought maybe I had a little better advantage on getting through than what we had done before. I called Mr. Brown. He was very gracious to take my call, had a nice 45-minute conversation. He told me the story about his dad's Buick that I'd helped sell, and his mother's Sterling Tea Service and so forth. And being the good salesman, I went for the close. And Mr. Brown gave me a very interesting analogy. He says, "If this were baseball, you have the major league, you have the minor league, and you have the farm team." And Bethany is the farm team. He said, "We have four other stores." So this was a time period when we were between city managers. Mr. Hartman sent him a nice letter, and then Hank came on board with a different city council and a different set of incentives. Third time is the charm. We're ready to move now into the major league. When this came to planning and zoning, our packet was on a starvation diet. We had like seven pages where we normally would have 40 or 50 pages, and we had a list of, I believe, 18, maybe 20 items that were considered to be deficiencies. Mr. Davis had worked diligently to try to figure out those things that were critical and those things that were not. At the, in the interim, from the time that packet was put together until we had our meeting, many of those items became moot, if you will. And in that meeting, Amanda got up and identified a couple of items still within staff's jurisdiction that were deficient. And Mr. Caden, on the part of the engineering department, identified those things that still needed to be addressed. And that is the four items that are contained in the resolution in front of you. The items that you have in front of you, probably the stickiest for those of us who look into the legalities of it, has to do with the abandonment of the easement. And the explanation that is given there is that the, typically, and I asked Mr. Davis about this specifically, when you have an easement, the easement is to the benefit of the city as well as the property owner. And if you abandon an easement, you have to have the endorsement of the district court. So to address this situation, you have the resolution in front of you where the city is going to disclaim forever any interest in this easement. The easement is not critical to the property because there will be another line that serves it for these purposes. That's why it's important to bring these three lots into one. The opportunity to go to district court is, will be resting upon Mr. Brown and 7-Eleven. Mr. Davis checked with a couple of his contacts in the land entitlement business, and they said they did not consider that this would be a cloud, but if Mr. Brown wishes to remove it, he'd be the one that would have to go to district court. And I thought maybe a little bit of background, a little additional information of what went on that is not included in your packet tonight would be of help to you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
I would like to say something to Mr. Carlson. I think the old weller should be very proud.
This is a public hearing item. Is there anybody else that would like to address this issue?
My name is Chong Branson. I am the architect for 7-Eleven stores, and there were a couple of questions I'd like to answer that was brought up earlier. One was the drainage report. That drainage report was issued, our first version was issued several weeks back, and the city engineer had reviewed it. The calculations were a little different from the engineer's standpoint versus our engineering. Since then, the two entities have gotten together, and our engineer, Grubbs, consultant, has adopted or took his recommendation and revised the new drainage calculation. And that report was just completed either, well, today, and it was either issued this afternoon or will be tomorrow morning. And the final conclusion on that report was that there is less runoff in this new developed plan than there is currently. And I can only assume that it's due to the additional landscaping ordinance that we followed to get that plan. And the other question that was brought up was, when will the construction begin? I was instructed by Mr. Brown that we were to start the minute after we get our building permit.
Thank you.
And typically, it takes about six months for completion.
Thank you.
I got the idea, I heard you're the architect, but I didn't get your name if you would. you would.
Uh, Chong Branson.
Sean.
Chong, C-H-O-N-G.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the resolution.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Cast your votes, please. Are you good, you got it? Okay, item number four is to receive and open bids for the city hall computer system. Do I understand we have bids?
Sure.
Here we go.
I knew that was Kim.
That's not fair.
Have a knife.
You just, you just have one bid for the computer servers.
Okay. I'm told we have just but one bid for the computers, and that's from, um, who's it from, oh, uh, ImageNet Consulting, and it appears to be thirty-four thousand eight-hundred and seven dollars. And so, at this point, we'll, uh, receive a motion to refer this to staff for their recommendations that'll bring it back to us.
Would you, would you repeat the amount again, please?
Thirty-four thousand eight-hundred and seven dollars, no cents.
Zero cents.
So, do I hear a motion to refer this to staff?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Now, cast your votes, please. Okay, item number five is the, uh, receive bid for the treatment of water, this water sludge, or the lime sludge, I should say, the hauling out away and disposal of it. For those of you that don't know, this is an ongoing thing, we do this, what, once a year?
Is it least?
At least once a year. It's a, the lime is a byproduct of the wonderful water that we drink, and we do have good water in this city, and if you don't believe it, go to any of the neighboring cities, but we do have good water, and this is the result thereof.
Come next door.
Do we have more than one?
Just one, sir.
We have but one bid. Well?
Similars on the front, Mr. Chair.
Oh, here it is.
Jacob Farms.
This one bid is from Jacob Farms out of Okarche, and the bid is a hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. And again, we will refer this to staff to see if it qualifies, and so, do I hear a motion to do so?
I'll make the motion.
A second?
I'll second it.
Cast your votes. Okay, the, uh, item number six is propose a executive session for the discussion of acting, hiring an acting city manager. And do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Cast your votes, please. We shall return. We'd like to call this meeting back to order. Thank you very much for indulging us. Uh, for those of you that are not in the know and wondering what's going on, just to let you know, most of you know that we had a citywide election six months ago, wasn't it? Something like that? And what day? February the twelfth. And one of the items on that agenda item was to, uh, amend our charter so as the city manager could live within ten miles of the city limit. Our current city charter reads, they have to live within the city limit. Phil Cole, our acting city manager, our hero, lives without of the city limits. If we had amended the charter, then Phil's Cole could still be the city manager. But since the charter did not get amended, he can no longer be, he, he's limited for a six-month period. His time is drawing to an end. So, did I say that right?
Correct.
So with that being said, we have to appoint, we have a multitude of applications, of which Mr. Cole gave us three more yet tonight, I think that makes the total count to eighteen applicants. Is it eighteen?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, so we, we need to go through the applicants, but in the meantime, we need a city manager. And so, uh, no decision was made in the executive session, but item number seven is to consider the possible action in the matter of hiring an acting or an interim city manager. And with that, I think.
I'd like to make a motion.
Kathy Larson, would you like to make the motion?
I would, I would. The motion is to appoint Ken Smart as temporary city manager effective March twenty-fifth of twenty nineteen. It also is to direct the interim city manager, acting city manager, uh, I'm sorry, act, the interim city attorney to draft an agreement with Mr. Smart to serve as the temporary city manager for a, for, uh, uh, consideration at the next meeting.
Um, one thing that I would do is I'd take them, um, one at a time, I'd take the first motion and take a vote on it, and then do the second.
Okay, then the motion is to appoint Ken Smart as the temporary city manager effective March twenty-fifth of twenty nineteen.
I would make a motion to approve.
Well, we had the motion, so yours would be a second.
That would be my second, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, motion and a second. Any questions? Then cast your votes, please.
Now, may I make a second motion?
Yes, ma'am.
To direct the interim city attorney to draft an agreement with Ken Smart to serve as a temporary city manager for the council consideration at the next meeting, which is, I believe, uh, I don't have the date.
April the second.
April the second.
Mr. Chairman, I would second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, may cast your votes. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to thank, uh, Chief Cole for the fantastic job that he's done during this interim period. It's not easy to step into that role and try to keep things together under less than optimal circumstances, chief. Great job.
Item number eight on tonight's agenda is, uh, citizens' comments, uh, any, anybody would like to step forth and make a comment of any sort? Hearing or seeing none, we'll go to number nine, the city attorney's report.
I don't have anything.
Okay, city manager's report.
I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to, uh, first welcome, uh, Mr. Smart to, uh, the Bethany team, and, uh, I have had discussions with Mr. Smart, and, uh, I think, uh, he will hit the ground running quickly, and I've certainly committed myself to bringing him up to speed on what's going on in the city and different projects, and, uh, I welcome him aboard. And just a couple of thank yous, first of all, uh, to the staff, incredible support for me. Uh, I learned much more from them than they learned from me, and we have an incredible group of people that truly, truly want to serve the citizens and come to work every day trying to make this city better. And, uh, I, I want to thank staff, and I want to thank everyone on this council and in the past, the, the past council, uh, that has shown me outstanding support and patience and understanding, and, uh, I'd just like to thank those individuals. Uh, I'd like to thank my, uh, wife and daughter at home. Uh, more time has been spent here than I, than I usually do as police chief. And, uh, I want to thank Chief Reed for stepping in my shoes at the PD, and, uh, I didn't have to worry one minute about the police department. And, uh, I'm looking forward to getting back to them, and I, and I truly think I have a lot better knowledge of how the city works, and this five months will make me a better police chief. That's all I have, thank you.
Well, let's go down here, Miss Sandoval, would you like to make a comment?
No comment tonight, thank you.
Mr. Matt?
I'd just like to, uh, say thanks to this young man who's attended the meeting tonight, maybe because a parent is here or, uh, someone, but for being, being involved in the process and listening, and, uh, kudos to you and all the best over spring break.
Mr. Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank the chairman for sitting in tonight, I think you did an excellent job. Um, takes a lot to have fortitude and, uh, composure to conduct a meeting, thank you.
Thank you, you're very kind.
Chief Cole, thank you for your service. Um, your response time was immediate on a number of the issues, and whether it was a, uh, text at nine o'clock at night that you responded to, or a telephone call, um, I was incredibly impressed with the competency and the ability to serve, and I can see why you're a great police chief. Thank you for the opportunity to, uh, work with you, and I don't think I would have done that, uh, had you not fulfilled this obligation, so thank you, I can't say that enough. Um, and, Mr. Smart, I'm, uh, anxious and ready to begin the process, and thank you for, uh, offering to do this, and I look forward to working with you, uh, and the council, and that's the third point. As a council, I'm, we need to work together and communicate effectively, um, and I'm going to recommit, uh, myself to that process, and I'm going to reevaluate how I do that, and I'm going to do it better, and I'm going to, um, include and discuss and attempt to work through all issues in a way that is beneficial and proactive, uh, on, on my behalf towards everyone on council. So, I want to publicly state that, and, um, I think we have a new council, we have a new dynamic, and we both, all of us have to determine what our skillset is and how we can participate and what we can offer to the process in order to benefit the residents of the city of Bethany. They're ready, and they need, uh, elected officials to represent them, to increase the quality of life that we have in this great city. I believe in Bethany, and I believe in the city council, um, and that's all I have.
Mr. Herron?
Thank you, Mr. Todd. I'd also like to thank Chief Cole for stepping in for the last six months, almost, five months now, and look forward to working with you, Mr. Smart. That is all.
Mr. Hunter?
Well, it's the sake of being redundant, uh, first off, thank you, Mr. Palmer, for that hon, honest and heartfelt, uh, commitment. I think we all, uh, we'll, we'll make that same commitment and work together and provide a very congruent group on this horseshoe. Mr. Todd, you did a great job tonight, stepped right into that role and fulfilled it. Chief, I'll tell you again, uh, we've known each other for almost thirty years, and I have the utmost respect for, uh, for you, and, uh, you hit this job, uh, running when you hit the ground and did a great job, and I'll say the same thing to Mr. Smart, I like the idea of you hitting the ground running when you come in here and, uh, enact as our interim city manager. Thank you.
Ms. Larson?
Well, chief, I think I told you, or asked you, when you first, we first knew you were going to be in this position, do you know what you're getting yourself into? Um, and you have exceeded my expectations, and I think that of many of us here on the council, as well as in the city. Uh, you've taken care of our city for a good number of years, and you did it again, and I want to personally thank you, and I personally want to thank your daughter and your wife, even more so. Um, and I asked you the same question, Mr. Smart, uh, do you know what you're getting yourself into?
Oh.
I think you have the support of the council, and I look forward to your coming, uh, presence amongst us. Um, Bethan, I want to thank you, you also have, um, had a challenging time here, um, and it's not over yet, and I want to thank you for stepping up on the plate when maybe things just pop up, and I can be the reason for some of those, and I'll take credit for that. Um, and again, I want to thank our staff, I had the opportunity to visit with several of them this week again, and I think our, our employees here in Bethany are the greatest. You know, we all had bad days, we all do that, but for the most part, I can't say this week I saw anyone that had one. That's all I had tonight, thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, this year will make, uh, twenty-six years for me, uh, being associated with the city of Bethany. Uh, twenty years of them were with the planning and zoning, fifteen of those I chaired thereof, and, uh, all that time, I had the privilege of working with Chief Cole, and I want to tell you, it's been a delight, a real pleasure to work with Mr. Cole, and I can't thank you enough, sir. You're very, very kind to step into the, fill some big shoes, and, uh, you've done a marvelously good job in doing so.
Can I press that one?
Please do, sir, a new acting city manager.
Well, first off, I just want to thank everyone, uh, I'm looking forward to working with all of you, I think there's a lot of exciting things going on in Bethany, and I'm happy to be a part of it, and anyway, I appreciate your vote of confidence tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Smart, we want you to know that you have the, the confidence of the council, and, uh, we want to work with you and, uh, make the effective time.
That, that's important, and I'm going to count on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we've got some new council people here, and so you're not expected to know the question I'm asking, but do you have any idea whose picture that is on the wall? You do.
I'm not nude, but I'm re, renewed.
That happens to be a picture of Mr. Tom Ray, and he, for many, many years, sat right here in this vacant seat, and, uh, a very, very good, uh, friend of mine, a very champion of, uh, the city of Bethany. Uh, the reason I'm bringing that up is, tonight, Mr. Ray is smiling in his grave because he fought for a long time to get that corner that we now rezoned and redid tonight for 7-Eleven. He championed that thing for years, and, uh, I, if he can look down from heaven, I'm sure he's looking down and just dancing a jig right now, it's that important to him. And, go for it, Mr. Tom Ray, happy for you. Okay, do we have any new business, item number twelve? Hearing or seeing none, we'll consider, uh, this meeting adjourned, we'll go to Bethany Public Works Authority and the consent docket. Do I have a motion regarding the consent docket?
Motion to approve.
Second? We have a motion, a second, cast your votes, please. The, uh, any new business for the Bethany Public Works? Hearing or seeing none, we'll cons, uh, we'll adopt, pronounce it adjourned, the Bethany Hospital Trust, item number one is a consent docket, item A and B.
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Cast your votes, please. Any new business for the hospital trust? Hearing or seeing none, we'll con, uh, consider adj, that adjourned. Bethany Development Authority, we have consent docket, item A and B. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions? Cast your vote, please. Any new business for Bethany Development Authority? Hearing or seeing none, we'll consider the meeting adjourned, and with that, we are adjourned tonight, thank you very much.